We're hot, okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening to each of you. We appreciate your attendance. If you would stand, the Vice Mayor will have our invocation and lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Gracious God, we praise you and thank you for our city, our state, and our nation. We ask you to be with us and guide us in our decisions tonight. Bless our first responders, our military, and we ask in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Curry. First item on our agenda tonight is some special presentation. We're going to have an audit presentation by Leslie and Danielle. I know you're here.
Come on up, Leslie. And for the members watching at home, we did include that our audit would be put online. We'll be delayed. We'll have it up tomorrow for everybody to view, and then we'll have a copy in the library.
Well, hi. My name is Leslie Roberts. I'm with the accounting firm Brown Edwards, which is new. And this was a first-year audit for us, and I was telling some of the staff this really went better than most first-year audits ever go. And I know you guys have had some turnover, and as you'll hear me present, we've got some new GASPs or a new GASP that was pretty pretty difficult to implement, and so we all kind of pulled together and collaborated and got everything done. Again, my name is Leslie Roberts. I'm a partner with Brown Edwards, and I'm also a citizen of Pecoson. And born and bred here, really. But I graduated from Pecoson High School. But anyway, just go over it. I'm just going to go over some high points of it. I know you guys have had have had a chance to look at it. Hopefully, you have. And just want to point out some things. Overall, like I said, the audit went very well, especially for our first-year audit. We were able to come in here and do our work when we planned, and everybody was prepared for us, and they were available throughout the fieldwork. On pages one through four is the independent auditor's report, and this is kind of the bottom line. Were we able to come in here as an independent third party and look at your financial records and say that they present fairly the financial positions and the activity for your year? And you've got another clean audit opinion. That's in the second paragraph right at the front. And so, yes, we were able to come in here and look at your records and say that the balances and the activity presents fairly the activity of the city of Pecoson. Moving on, there's a section called Management's Discussion and Analysis. It's on page, goes from page five to seventeen. If you read nothing else of the Audit Financials, this is a good kind of high-level summary of how your financials are put together, some of your financial policies, and also it gives you some comparative information year over year and some information, budgetary information as well. So that's really a good thing to focus on if you're going to look at it. It's very hard, I know, to read these financials. They're in a format that isn't that easy to read. So this part is very user-friendly. Moving on to the notes to the financials, well, to the basic financials, they go from pages ten to page thirty. And just a couple of things. A statement of financial net position is on page ten. And this is kind of like your balance sheet. You've got your assets, liabilities, and what's left over. In the case of the city, what's left over is pretty strong. You've got a net position of about forty point five million, and that's broken down between investment, net investment and capital assets, which is about sixty-one percent of your total. And then your unrestricted portion is about thirteen point seven million, about thirty-four percent of the total. So you can see that it's pretty healthy, net result, or what's left over, which is called net position for a governmental entity. Also, on the basic financial statements, you can see that you were, on page eleven, which is the statement of activities. And this one is very hard to read because you've got your revenues in one column, expenses in the next column, and so forth. But if you look at the third line from the bottom, you can see that your change in net position was positive, and that's what you wanted to say. And it was positive to the tune of almost four point eight million. So that's good. Moving on, the notes to the financials cover a lot more, and you've got some notes, and you've got some required supplemental disclosure. Not going to go into all of that, but if you move back toward the back of the financials, pages one twenty-six and one twenty-seven, there's another report based on our audit, and this is a report on financial reporting, internal control over financial reporting. If we had any issues that we thought were material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, they would be noted in this letter. We did not have any of those. If we had any issues of noncompliance, we do these additional procedures related to the state code compliance. We found anything there, we would note that in this letter. We did not have any findings there. Moving on to yet another report that goes with our Audit Financials is on page one thirty-one through one thirty-three. And this is on the federal money that you get in and the expenditures and the compliance requirements related to that. And basically, this is another clean report. If we had any findings related to that, that you've probably heard it referred to as a single audit before, basically, we pick programs, and we go in and we look at the compliance requirements that are material and direct to those programs, and we do additional test work. Some of it's financial, some of it is purely compliance. We did not have any findings as a result of that audit. So that's another clean opinion. So there's three kind of opinions in one rolled up into your Audit Financials, and that's that big balance document. And that's all I have on the Audit Financials. If you have any questions, we do have that other document stapled that Danielle's going to go through.
Thank you, Les. Appreciate that. Any questions, Leslie? You must have done all right.
Well, Mayor, let me just add that this is, again, our first year with Brown Edwards. This is a collected effort, both with the city and schools. So I'd like to thank the schools as well for helping us get across the finish line, and we're excited for next year.
Okay, and I'm going to let Danielle talk a little bit about the required correspondence, most of which is boilerplate.
So I'll just go briefly over the stapled document from us. The very front has the contact information for Leslie, myself, and Katie Bab, who was the manager on the engagement. So if anybody has any questions or follow-up comments you want to bring to us at a later date, feel free to reach out to us individually. We're always welcome for questions and to have further discussions on anything that you might want to talk about. The first page of the letter, as Leslie mentioned, there was a new GASP implementation that we kind of worked through this year, GASP eighty-seven on leases. And as a result, there is an extra little item here related to significant estimates that are embedded in your financial statements. And leases is kind of based a lot on management's estimates on how long these leases are going to last, which impacts the financial figures that are embedded in your financials. Otherwise, there were no changes in your estimates from last year, pension, OPEB, and your estimated lives of capital assets. We are pleased to report that we encounter no significant, there are no difficulties or disagreements in dealing with management. It was a very pleasant, very collaborative process with both the city and the schools. And then there is a reference to Appendix B, which is the listing of journal entries that were posted as part of the audit process. Because we do assist in the preparation of your statements, there are quite a few entries listed in that appendix that are related to preparing your financials on a full-approval basis, to get it to full-approval from your fund basis, which is what you're used to looking at on a regular, throughout the year. So there are some journal entries in there that we posted, and also in Appendix C, there was one unreported adjustment. One week ago, the APA provided some guidance for the state opioid monies that have been coming through to localities, and it just wasn't enough time to get those in your financials. So we determined that it's not material, but it is an unrecorded revenue stream that will be there next year. So we just wanted to bring it to your attention that it's not embedded in your financials right now. And then also, there's, the third appendix, Appendix A, is the representation letter that's provided by management to us as part of the audit. And there's also a pretty lengthy section here about future GASP pronouncements if you're having trouble sleeping at night. Are there any questions on that document?
Questions with Danielle?
Okay. I just want to say, Leslie and I both want to say thank you so much for being given the opportunity to work with Pecoson this year.
Thank you, Gasp, for what you do. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty. Let's move on. Our next item is a years of service employee recognition. Ms. Tanya?
Yes, thank you. And we started this during the COVID, and we're going to continue through this every year. And this gives us an opportunity to reflect on those employees that have hit milestones. If we can get the PowerPoint pulled up. Mr. Canelo has a few more years before we see his picture on here. We apologize for those who are sitting at home. We're just waiting for... Why don't we do...
Do we know who they are if we...
Yeah. How about I'll just go ahead and read it? First of all, I'd like to thank, once we, we'll replay this on live, on the TV as it scrolls through. But our first one is a five-year. It's Harold Randy Cook. He's a firefighter medic from the fire department. He has five years of service. And interesting enough, when I was at the city of Newport News, I actually retired him out as a firefighter there. So it's great to see that he's now here at City of Pecoson. The next one is Carla Crockett. She's a sergeant for the police department. She has, again, had her five-year milestone. Carla started off as an officer. She was promoted to a corporal, and just recently, as of last week, was promoted to a sergeant. So Thomas R. Diggs, he's a firefighter, EMT with the fire department. Again, he's another candidate that we've taken from Newport News because I remember him there as well. Next is William Willis. He's a firefighter, goes by the name of Eric. We also have Jessica Burkhardt. She's in our library. She does a lot for us there, and we appreciate everything she does for us for those programs. We'll skip this person. What are you doing? Next is me. Next, we have Kristi Snap. She's one of our existing, ah, Assistant City Manager. Let's see if I can catch back up. Here we go. Watch this. Here we go. Thomas, if you can get me started at the beginning, can you... Real quickly. So five years of work. So I'll kind of slowly go there. There's a picture of our Randy. There is our Sergeant Crockett. There is Thomas, or Tommy. There's Eric, another firefighter. There's who I was talking about, Jessica, in the library. We'll skip her. That's me. There's Kristi. She's with us here at the city manager's office. We have one of our city engineers. This is Garrett. He started with us five years as well. Been real pleased with the work that he's done here. We have Wally Horton, who as well, started in five years in this state, so outstanding. Next year, it's our ten-year, and it looks like it's going on its own. We've got Scott Holloway. He's a mechanic in our garage. We have Hicks. He's another sergeant that was just promoted to the police department, promoted to sergeant in the police department. We got Anush Wigan. She's a part-time in the libraries. We have Jerry Beans. He's in our Public Works. Our fifteen-year awards. We have Lisa Nichols in our DMV Select. We have Christopher Tantilla. He's a firefighter with the fire department. You have Captain Waddell. Our twenty-year employees. We have Daryl Griffins. He is a firefighter in our fire department. Lisa Turner. She's a detective with our police department. Sherry Coffey. A lot of you have talked to her when you're calling in on permits. Chuck Downey, another firefighter. Twenty-five years. We have Doug Montgomery. He's in our Public Works. He's the one that you see out there operating the boom trucks. Dewayne McFarland, another firefighter, is actually a master firefighter. Thirty years of service. We have John Ellis. He's in our fleet management, keeps our vehicle going on the road. We would like to congratulate all our employees and their dedication to the city, just a few that have made these milestones. And again, each year, we'll be presenting each milestone as we come forward, but thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. Any comments regarding our honorees?
Okay. I think this is great.
It is great.
Keep employees for that length of time. That says a lot about our management.
All right, let's move on to the audience for visitors. At this time, if there's anyone in our audience that would like to address council, I'll say any issue, but if those of you that are here for the storage warehouse, we're going to, if it's okay with you guys, we'll call you when we get to that public hearing, if that's all right, okay? All righty. Other than that, we're ready to hear from anyone who wants to address council on any topic. All right, saying none. Let's move on to the approval of our minutes, our regular session, November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
May I move that we approve the minutes of our regular session of November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two?
All right, we've got a motion made second. We approve our minutes. Any concerns, comments, questions regarding those minutes? If not, Ms. Kim, please.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilman Hucks?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thanks, Kim. Move on to item F. We have three public hearings, the first of which is an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three for general fund and capital project fund, Pecoson City Schools. Tanya?
Okay. Well, tonight, I have an ordinance in front of you for appropriating additional funds to the school board. We have Artie Tillit, our superintendent, who's in the audience, as well as Tara Woodruff, if there's any question of council. But each year, when school board has funds left over they did not utilize during the year, they return the funds back to the city and ask for reappropriation at the consideration of city council. So tonight, we have provided to you the amounts in which they wish to appropriate. Since the dollar amount was higher than five hundred thousand, that's why we see it on the public hearing. So we did have to advertise for tonight. But they're asking for a reappropriation of four hundred and thirty-three thousand four seventy-one, a one-time bonus for all their current full-time and part-time employees. A reappropriation of one eighty-two six sixty-nine to provide interior and exterior security enhancement, provide monitors on the primary school bus runs, and install additional adaptive playground equipment at the primary and elementary schools. They've requested eighty-one eight forty to provide funding to replace athletic equipment that has exceeded its useful life. And then they've requested a hundred and sixty-one thousand to be transferred to capital projects to purchase, to make the completion of purchasing two buses. So in front of you tonight, you have an ordinance that we did, if you see in front of you, have a corrected version where we've updated the proper dollar amount from September of last year, where we appropriated a hundred and ten, not a hundred and nine. So tonight, council, I'm asking you to approve the ordinance, reappropriating the funds as requested of the superintendent.
Okay, thank you, Tanya. Any questions, Tanya?
I just said one thing. The, when you talked about this foundational adaptive playground equipment, having been a playground safety inspector, I highly endorse adaptive equipment for the children that require it for our schools. I did an inspection of the school's playgrounds, and that was probably the one thing I noticed, it's children that need assistance or other things that can enjoy it, like other children that maybe can roam freely. It's a good idea to have money there for the adaptive playground.
Thank you, Keith. Any other comments? If not, we need a motion.
May I move that we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers and new appropriations for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three for the general fund and capital project.
Pardon me, Mr. Mayor. I don't believe you opened a comment for public hearing.
Did not. You're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. Forgive me for that. Let's back up. Let's back up. And let's open the public hearing and ask, if there's, maybe Mr. Tillit wants to talk. I don't know. Open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone that would like to address this issue. Anyone that's opposed to this issue. I don't see any, okay? Let's start over, buddy, if you don't mind.
I'd do it all again.
Close the public hearing.
Can't do it all again.
That's my fault. I apologize.
We adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers, new appropriations for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, general fund and capital project fund.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Motion made second. We adopt the ordinance. Any concerns or comments? You think Wayne's down there is not doing anything. He's kind of sitting there.
I'm awake.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it. Okay, we have a motion made second. We adopt the ordinance. Ms. Kim?
Vice Mayor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Southall?
Aye.
Councilman Fai?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Mayor Hassel?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thanks, Kim. Let's move on to our second public hearing, is resolution to approve or deny a conditional use permit by Med Express Amundt Service Incorporated, DBA Legacy EMS Incorporated, for the operation of a private amundt service to be located at five thirty-eight With Creek Road, Zone B two Business Commercial, and the tax map number is eighteen dash one five nine. Tanya?
All righty. I'm going to turn it over to our planner, Mr. Canelo.
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Glad to be back with you, and we'll be mindful of your time. So I will give you a fairly swift presentation. I'm sure you've all had a chance to read my staff memo, so I don't want to belabor any point. But if you have questions, I'm certainly happy to entertain those at the But if you have questions, I'm certainly happy to entertain those at the conclusion of the presentation. For your consideration first, Mr. Mayor, is a conditional use permit as mentioned for a private ambulance service to be located at 538 With Creek Road. The applicant is Med Express Ambulance Services Incorporated, doing business as Legacy EMS. Request for the conditional use permit, Mr. Mayor, is before you because private ambulance services are not permitted by right in our B2 district. This, the notice for tonight's public hearing was advertised in the Daily Press, November 30th and December 7th, and adjacent letters were sent to necessary property owners on November 14th. About the use, and I quote the application, Mr. Mayor, is to operate an administrative office for a private ambulance service, providing transports from Langley Air Force Base to their market area hospitals. We only provide under facility transports for Langley Air Force Base and are not for hire. This is the proposed site, Mr. Mayor, I'm sure you're all familiar with. 538 With Creek Road has housed a few different businesses over the years, but is the current office of Marquee Homes, as well as the, the business for your consideration. This is the aerial proposed site. I'm sure you all are familiar with the location. I've included the slides, Mr. Mayor, of permitted uses in the business district that you're all familiar with, but I thought it was important to include those in case you do have any questions, we can come back to it. And of course, the use is only permitted by conditional use permit. There are seven recommended, recommended conditions, Mr. Mayor. The first is that at no time shall more than two ambulances be stored on site. The second is that no employee shall take quarters on site nor sleeping accommodations be provided. The third is that all signage shall be subject to architectural review. The, the business is in the city's architectural control district. The fourth is that the use must comply with all local, state, and federal permits, licenses, and regulations. And if at any time the use is operating in violation of any of the regulations set forth by the aforementioned agencies, the city council may revoke the permit. The fifth condition is that if at any time the specified permitted use on the property is discontinued for a period of two or more years, this permit shall become null and void. The sixth is that the service shall remain non-emergency and shall only operate with contracted clients, and as such, there shall be no use of lights, sirens, et cetera. And the seventh is that city council reserves the right to review and amend the conditions of the permit as they see fit. Staff recommends approval, Mr. Mayor, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you or members of council may have.
Hey, Thomas, well done. Any questions of Thomas? We talked about this a few weeks ago, anticipation of the conditional use permit. Any, any other questions, concerns? Thomas, thank you. Good job. Okay, let's open the public hearing then and ask if there's anyone in our audience that would like to address this issue. Okay. Seeing up, close the public hearing and ask for a motion from council.
Operation of a private ambulance service to be located at 538 With Creek Road, Zone B2, special tax map parcel 18-1-59.
Sure. Thank you, buddy. Just a second.
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, Keith. All right, we have a motion made second. We adopt the resolution. Are there, are there concerns or are there comments from anybody? If not, Ms. Kim?
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Hux.
Aye.
Councilman Fai.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Andrews.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Mayor Hassel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. Thank you, Kim. Let's move on to public hearing number three. It's a resolution to approve or deny a conditional use permit by Graham Real Estate LLC for the operation of a mini storage warehouse to be located at tax map parcels 18-1-103 and 18-1-104 on With Creek Road, Zone B2 Business Commercial. Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The request is exactly what you just read. The applicant is Graham Real Estate LLC. And the code considerations for this matter, Mr. Mayor, is that many storage facilities are not permitted by right in the B2 district and can only operate upon the issuance of conditional use permit. Legal notice, this was advertised in the Daily Press, November 30th and December 7th, and adjacent letters were sent to necessary property owners on November 14th. About the use, quoting the application, Mr. Ware, Mr. Mayor, the applicant desires to construct an interior climate-controlled self-storage facility on the property. The applicant desires for the use to be an attractive addition to the corridor in terms of both architecture and landscaping, which will be compatible with the surrounded, surrounding uses of low-traffic generating. A few, little bit of information, Mr. Mayor. Approximately 540 units presented for the use and to be staffed by a full-time manager and part-time or full-time assistant manager. Proposed site, Mr. Mayor, is tax map parcels 18-TAC1, TAC103, and 18-TAC1, TAC104. It's two vacant parcels that comprise one large one that lie between the post office and the Moore Building, and it is Zone B2 Business Commercial. The same slides you saw in the last presentation, Mr. Mayor, the permitted uses in the B2 district. Happy to come back to this at your request. And of course, use is permitted only by conditional use permit. The fifteenth, which you can see on the screen, is many storage warehouses, and because of that, this is before you for consideration. I want to show you some elevations provided to us by the applicant. And I want to note that these were done with the, I'll say, advice and conditions and approval of the Architectural Review Board. This is the left elevation of the building, the right elevation of the proposed building. This is the front elevation with material description. I won't get into the intricate, intricate parts of the materials unless you prefer I do. But I do want to note that today I received new elevations from the applicant. This is not one of them, but I did it on purpose. The new elevations, Mr. Mayor, show that self-storage sign on the right side of the building. Well, it doesn't show it. They've, they've removed that from their proposal, and this is the most current elevation with that removed. Mr. Mayor, I included a conceptual site plan in the night's presentation. Happy to answer questions about that, should you have any. This is an illustrative concept plan. And, Mr. Mayor, I thought, in an effort to try, to try and paint the picture for you of, of the size of this building, I would include some building size comparisons. And the first one I used conveniently was the building we're all sitting and standing in. And that City Hall is pretty similar, actually, to the proposed warehouse. And I'll read my note. The proposed, my storage building is 280 feet wide and 125 feet deep on the side nearest the post office. It is also proposed with an approximate 30,000-square-foot footprint. And also, for comparison, City Hall has a footprint of approximately 25,000 square feet. You can see the width of City Hall is 282 feet, and the depth, at its deepest at the library, is 125. I'll, I'll get to footprint comparisons in just a second, Mr. Mayor. This, you can see, is the approximate footprint of the proposed building overlaid onto the aerial of City Hall to try and give you an idea of the size of the proposed building. Then I wanted to take a building, Mr. Mayor, that was obviously smaller than that proposed. And it's the building, the Parish Thrift Shop building, Mr. Sees and Bull Island Motor Company. You can see it's, it's about the same depth, 123 feet, compared to 125, but it is, is smaller in width at 220 feet. I did the same with the footprint, Mr. Mayor, and you can see the footprint of the proposed building overlaid onto the aerial of the Parish Thrift Shop facility. The third, Mr. Mayor, I chose a, a building that was larger for comparison size, of course. This is the Food Lion Shopping Center. It's 180 feet deep, the side you see when going down Victory Boulevard. It's 338 feet in width. And again, this is the footprint of the proposed building overlaid into the aerial of the Food Lion Shopping Center. The building height, Mr. Mayor, I've tried to do the, the same thing, and I'm going to read my note. The applicant has expressed that the building will not be greater than 35 feet in height as prescribed by City Code. As you can see, the building has a fairly flat roof, but there is a small peak. The height will be measured to the midpoint of the ridge line and the peak, which does not appear as a significant height difference. That's how we measure height for all buildings in the city. Here's a height example, building we're all familiar with, Pecoson Fire and Rescue Station 2. And from the grade to the peak of the engine bay is 36 feet. One more, Mr. Mayor, Pecoson Diner. From the grade to the peak, building I'm too familiar with, is 24 feet. And this is an important one, Mr. Mayor. These are, this is a height comparison with the South Town Villas. And if you look at the picture on the left, that is the proposed property. And you can see the rear of the home and two adjacent homes that I've shown on the right. Those are three-story townhouses, and they are approximately 36 feet at the peak. This is an adjacent building, the Moore Building we're all familiar with. And at, at its peak is approximately 26 feet. I did have an opportunity to observe it with our building inspector, Mr. David Forrest, who is well-versed in the field, much more so than I, so I appreciate his assistance. But then I had an opportunity to speak with one of the owners of the building who thought that the peak of the Moore Building was about 26 feet. There are eight conditions recommended for you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The first is a repeat that the use must comply with all local, state, and federal permits, licenses, and regulations. Second, if at any time specified permitted use on the property is discontinued for a period of two or more years, the permit shall become null and void. The third is that the city council reserves the, the right to review and amend the conditions of the permit as they see fit. This is an important one, Mr. Mayor. The fourth is that the site shall be developed in substantial conformance as determined by staff as it is approved by the city council. Any major deviation from the proposed site plan as determined by staff would require the approval of city council. Additionally, any major deviation from the proposed elevations as determined by staff would require the approval of the Architectural Review Board. The fifth condition is that all loading and unloading shall take place on site and at no time shall be permitted on With Creek Road or in a manner which restricts the access of the sidewalk. The sixth is that no outside storage shall be permitted. The seventh is that, except for purposes of loading and unloading, there shall be no more, shall be no parking or storage of trucks, trailers, and moving vans, with the exception of one company-owned vehicle, to be used only by customers who rent space in the building. And the eighth, Mr. Mayor, is that as part of the applicant's site plan approval, all store, water, maintenance facilities shall be fenced and shall only be accessible for maintenance and landscaping services. Mr. Mayor, these are the eight conditions staff recommends approval with. Planning Commission voted to recommend denial by a vote of four to zero, and I am certainly happy to answer any questions you or any other member of council may have.
Hey, Thomas, thank you. That was a great presentation, by the way. Any questions, Thomas, Keith?
Yep. Matter of fact, I got some questions.
Sure.
We talked about them a little bit this afternoon. We'd like to go over them again. Talking about 540 units, mostly five and 10-foot units, I heard at the planning commission meeting. And they'll all be climate-controlled, which is a good thing. The artist renderings I got before, and even the ones here now, it's a little bit out of context, and the one shows a picture from up above, which no one would ever see. So I'm glad to see you had other views, and I appreciate all the work you did in getting the, the renderings into the comparisons. It really does help. My first question is, is, do we know, is there a large demand for storage facilities in Pecoson?
I'm certainly not a market analyst, Councilman Fai, but I can tell you it's the position of, of staff that anticipating, I'll say, a significant increase in single-family homes in the next three or four years. There's certainly going to be a demand for it.
I can kind of answer the question. I stopped by Storage World, who's just down the street a little bit, and checked with them and asked them how they're doing. They're pretty much full up, and he talked about, and you may already know, that trying to expand their footprint as well. So it's something you may hear about, if you haven't already heard about it. So that gave me a feeling that, yeah, there's, there is a need. I don't know where other customers come from. I assume a fairly good number from Pecoson. And I asked this question, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it. Do the other two storage warehouses in Pecoson exist under conditional use permit? I think you said part of one is.
They do. Yes, sir. I had a chance to look at it after I spoke with you today. The one at 363 Hunts Neck, the one behind Pecoson Automotive, has had three, an original conditional use permit approval and two modifications, one in 1991 and one in 1995, both of those to expand. The other, at 360 With Creek Road, Storage World, was approved originally by a conditional use permit in February of 2003, and an additional conditional use permit to expand in January of 2006.
Okay. One thing I'm hoping, I apologize for being the, the new guy on the block. Do you have any idea how long this conditional use permit would be for? Because I was reading that in our own things here. It can be for an indefinite period of time, or it can be for a specific period of time. Has, is that part of this at all? Because I didn't see it written.
No, sir. By, you know, virtue of the, the second condition that if, if the use is discontinued for a period of two or more years, the permit shall become null and void. But with your approval tonight, it'll be active as, as long as the use is continued.
That was kind of leading to my next question. What happens if it becomes null and void? I mean, we've got a pretty good-sized building there that has one purpose, and for some reason, it becomes null and void. Is the owner stuck with it, or we're stuck with it? I know we're stuck with it. Happened to it?
No, it's definitely a free-market and, and private property question, I can tell you, sir. But I, I can't imagine that the applicant is bringing this to you tonight for your consideration and, and any mindset that this use won't, won't be there and viable for a long time.
Okay. The, one of the other things I saw in the conditional use permit in our ordinance is that we talk about why we would approve a conditional use permit. You talk about the city may attach certain conditions and safeguards as are deemed necessary to protect the general public interest or the character of the neighborhood. All that, put that in the back of my mind. I have some other questions. I don't know if you can answer, maybe from the person that's asking for this. Again, I thank for the updated renderings from those I saw at the planning commission meeting and the board of zoning appeals. That was very educational there. The concept site, conceptual site plan indicates a possible second entrance or exit. Is that probably going to happen or not? Because, because it talks about, you can see it there to the north on the right side. Is that a possibility, or is that given up on, or?
I, I think, Councilman Fai, it's certainly possible, but I think that'll be determined at the time of site plan review with our engineering staff and the applicants.
Okay. As I was talking to you this afternoon, I've, I've gotten a lot of travel in the last three weeks since Thanksgiving and seen up and down highways, like Highway 17 in Gloucester County and York County, then down in the Virginia Beach area on Farrow Parkway and Indian River Road, and seen some of these facilities. And my question is, is, is this basically an optimum size for a storage warehouse of this type?
As far as I know, Councilman Fai, the, you know, the nature of them being transitioning to warehouse facilities, I, I would say is comparable to others we see in the region.
Like, is, is three floors, that's what we're talking about here, optimum? Or is two floors viable?
I think, I think that viability, and I think that's a better question for the applicant.
Is he here, she here?
They are here, sir.
Yes. Could they answer that question?
They're going to be speaking in just a few minutes, Keith.
Okay. Great. Okay. Okay. And let's see. Any comments I had before that, where I pretty much taken care of them, a call we had had to do with the signs, so I do appreciate that. That's all I have, sir.
Okay. Any other questions, Thomas?
I have a couple of questions. So I know whenever we take up green space, are the last condition about stormwater maintenance
Right.
What is the plan for that, do you know?
Again, that's included because one could certainly assume there will be stormwater maintenance facilities on-site, and that's a condition we, I'll say, borrowed from conditional use permits in the past where there are stormwater maintenance facilities. We conditioned that they're fenced for obvious safety reasons. But the extent of the stormwater maintenance facilities, of course, will be determined, again, during site plan review by our engineering staff.
But that will be something that the city is thinking should.
Absolutely.
Don't affect neighboring.
That, that's part of our site plan process and will be, will be taken care of.
Okay. And how many feet is there, do you know, between the size and the other, the adjacent structures?
That may be a little hard to see, but the applicant has proposed a ten-foot landscape buffer on the edges of the property, and I would, I would approximate that the corner on the side nearest to post office, the corner of the building, and this is certainly the applicant can clarify if I misspeak, but I would tell you is at least ten, probably closer to fifteen feet. And on the left side at the nearest, probably closer to about twenty feet.
And I just also wanted to clarify, their conditional use permit that they're asking for is for
That's correct.
The use of a storage facility. The height of the building, the setbacks on the front, the side, the height, everything that it's laid out doesn't require a conditional use permit. That is permitted the way it is by right.
The use is not permitted by right. The setbacks and yard regulations are prescribed by city code for the district. So that's the applicable city code and what we'll use during this development process.
I just wanted to clarify that there's, that everything about the building is allowed in our ordinance, other than
As presented. Yes, ma'am. If this was a by-right use as presented, the same, same size, same setback, same height, it is in an approvable form.
Would you mind going back to the list of uses that are allowed there?
Sure.
So for example, seven, it says medical care facilities, including hospitals and trauma centers. So if somebody wanted to come in and build the exact same-sized building, and it was a medical or trauma center, it would be by right, and it would not require a conditional use permit?
The use would be permitted by right, and as presented, if it was the same size of the building, I'll note, as presented, it would be permitted by right and wouldn't require variance.
Right. That's just what, so if, if the, if somebody else came in with the exact same building, exactly that way, but with one of those uses, it wouldn't even come before us, correct?
That is correct.
Hey, other questions, Thomas?
Yes, Gordon.
Go ahead. We've all seen some proposals for construction, and they present site plan elevations that look one way, but when they get built, they not look like the site plans that were presented, okay? And I was going to suggest that it be a requirement that it look much like the elevations that are presented. And my impression of the conditions that you have listed is that it is going to look much as presented.
Yes, sir.
And it's also my understanding that, again, reflecting on Jana's comments, that were that to be a food facility or another by-right use, they could build a building that size or even larger without any requirement to come before city council?
That is also true.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, other questions? Hey, Thomas, thank you. All right, let's open the public hearing, and I'll take these speakers in order as I got them. So the first speaker is Mr. Moffett. Ms. Moffett, I apologize. Thank you for the email, by the way.
Yeah, thank you, guys. I got some responses from some of you. So, good evening, council members. I did send an email to everyone here regarding the storage warehouse conditional use request that we're discussing tonight, and I respectfully advocate that this be denied. As someone who was born in a small town, much like Pecosin, I was raised to appreciate what small towns have to offer to its citizens. Such things as safety, close-knit community, walkability, and general aesthetics among a few. Because of these things and more, my family decided to lay down our roots in Pecosin, thus making it our place for the last twenty-five years. Buildings such as the storage warehouse would have been a deterrent as we looked for similar aesthetics to the ones we had left behind in another state. I wholeheartedly believe our town has so much potential, and this just doesn't align with the vision I believe Pecosin is trying to achieve. I'm not opposed to a storage unit, but just not in this location. This is an area heavily traveled by pedestrians on foot and children on bicycles. I would also, it would also take away from the general aesthetics of the old brick buildings and become a general eyesore for the community. I also understand that this is not a by-right use lot for a storage facility, and because of this, I ask that you all reconsider approving the request for the conditional use permit. While it may fit within guidelines, I am hopeful that you all can agree that it doesn't fit within our community's guidelines for aesthetics and small-town charm. A large storage warehouse on this section of With Creek would be out of character for our main city street. When we tell friends and family and neighboring cities that Pecosin is the place, let's ensure that it's the place that we want to live, shop, and gather. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moffett. Okay. Lindsay Watson? I had an email from you as well.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, good evening. My name is Lindsay Watson, and I am on your Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, as well as a previous interviewee for a prior city council position. I'm also the club treasurer for the Co-Annex Club of Pecosin, and just sharing all that to say how much I love this town. I also served on the CPT, the Community Participation Team, who was charged with collating community feedback a few years ago when the comprehensive plan was last seeking feedback for updates. Thank you all for your time tonight. I also appreciate Councilman Hux's time yesterday, who offered to speak with me before this meeting to walk me through some of the process and context, and to Councilman Phi, who encouraged me to come speak tonight. It's a testament to the process that we all can converse, so just want to say thank you. So to start, and for absolute clarity, I'm not opposed to a storage unit, even on that parcel. I recognize and agree that business revenue is critical to fund a great many things. And while I realize this is not a by-right use lot, I support the landowner's rights to sell to a company who oversees storage warehouses. My challenge to you is in the refinement of the proposal. I realize this proposal was recommended to be approved by the Architectural Review Board and recommended to be denied by the Planning Commission. And you esteemed council, you have the ultimate say, and I say it's not about what fits in the box. It's about intentional planning of what kind of place we want to live in. You have a commission dedicated to intentional planning, and it has given you feedback. Is our place to be characterized by over-large concrete boxes that, sure, are ever so slightly softened by a small handful of trees? I require, excuse me, I challenge you to require more, even if that's just a continuance to exercise your right to require just a little bit more in the way of design, because maybe this permanent structure is on our main drag, and there's no way of not seeing it. I'm also asking you to consider formalizing stricter requirements on beautification elements for future developers. I'm asking you to do what so many other beautiful small towns are doing, require new buildings to cater to the character of Pecosin, so that Pecosin can continue to be the place we keep advertising. If, for example, Sedona can demand McDonald's to paint their famous arches blue, surely we can partner with a local developer to ensure maybe trees are planted a little bit taller, perhaps orient the building so that the front facade is not so out of scale with the surrounding quaint brick buildings. As I went back to familiarize myself with the comprehensive plan, a few excerpts resonated with me. Permit a new development only where such developments are compatible with the character of adjoining uses or where the impacts of such new developments can be adequately addressed. Particular attention should be given to addressing impacts as incompatible development intensity, building height and scale, land uses, et cetera. Also, provide landscaped areas and trees along public roads and property lines, and develop sites in a manner that retains and enhances the natural wooded character of the city. Also, preserve the unique small-town atmosphere of Pecosin and protect it from the garish clutter found in some commercial districts in neighboring jurisdictions. All that said, the comprehensive plan is our ticket to future success in retaining that small-town feeling. Try to imagine a company that doesn't have a business plan. So I reiterate again, I'm not personally opposed to a storage warehouse, not even on this plot, even though this is not a by-right land zoning. I am, however, an advocate for the beauty of this small town, and I love it. I know that you have the power that's vested within our comprehensive plan to ensure that the quaint small-town culture remains the prime focal point. So I thank you for your careful, careful, careful consideration of this very permanent and very public place in our city, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Libby?
Hi, I'm Libby Grebel. I live at Forty-Six Shoreline Drive. I am an adjoining property owner to this project. I've sent each of you an email.
Libby, excuse me, will you pull that microphone down?
Is that better?
Yeah. Maybe it's just me that I'm not hearing very well.
We've got a plane. Why don't you give me a second?
Oh.
I think it's okay, Libby.
Do I need to repeat where I
I need to repeat my name.
My name or anything? Okay, I'm gonna try to hold this briefly. I do, I am in opposition of this project. Not, not the use, I'm not opposed to the use of the project as a storage facility. What I am opposed to is the height and the width of this particular unit, two hundred and eighty feet, a ninety-thousand-square-foot building with five hundred and forty units, thirty-five feet high. And if you look at the parking area in front of it, I think I counted fifteen spaces. Now, that may not be correct, so you correct me if I'm wrong, Thomas. But the parking in front of that, if you look at that rendition, if you could pull that up a little bit, is extremely small for a building of that size. I know that we have looked at the building by right would be acceptable, but the use is not acceptable. And what I think a lot of folks are missing is that I know that when our property was developed, which included the thrift store now and Mr. Sees, at the time that that was developed, because of the type of building that it was, it required a parking space for every square footage in that, in those buildings, both first and second floor, even though the second floor had, was not ever finished and has never been finished in all these years, which has probably been, I don't know, thirty years now. So even though a building by right can fit that, that, that box, so to speak, the parking requirements for a building of that size and use change. Is that not correct, Thomas? I read the article, I read through, through a lot of the zoning ordinance today that can require up to, I think it's four spaces per thousand feet, square feet. But the point I want to make is, is that you would get the impression that this building would be allowable if it wasn't for the use, but that's not necessarily the case, because the parking requirements would be very different based on the by-right building in that particular property. So I would ask that the council take a look at that. Again, we're not opposed to the use. If it was something more pleasing, not so massive, not so long, I have, I would like to just say that I do have some photographs that I would like to pass out to the council, if I may.
Sure.
Just to give you an example of some buildings of this size and how they look, and I just don't think that's Pecosin. And I don't think the citizens of Pecosin want to see that. And because this requires a conditional use permit, I think it is within your purview to deny this, as did the Planning Commission, because I do think that we have a responsibility to the citizens of Pecosin and our comprehensive plan that you have all passed, that it went through the Planning Commission, it's gone through the council, just as our previous speaker just, I've got highlights from the comprehensive plan, and it's so out of touch and out of tune with what we've passed as for the comprehensive plan. So I would ask each of you just to take a look at this, just to give you
Let me get, just give those to Kim, all of them, and she can Thank you.
But I just wanted to give everyone just a visual, and as our previous speaker said, people walk that sidewalk. Everybody was on that sidewalk during the Christmas parade. It's a walk, I mean, when you drive through a small-town city, you see what you, we are seeing what you would expect to see. We're not expecting to see a commercial building that's thirty-five feet high and two hundred and eighty feet long. We're not expecting to see that in a small-town city. So I give you that. The first pictures that you're looking at is on Todd's Center. Let me see. The first one that you're looking at, I believe I am I? Am I she?
It's Todd's city.
All right, the first one is Todd's, Todd's Lane. This building that you're looking at right here is right up against the highway. It's a, it's an e-commerce building. It is in the shopping, it's actually on the corner of the shopping center. It's approximately forty feet high, it's sixty-two feet wide, it's three hundred and eighty-four feet along Aberdeen Road. And if you have ever been over there, you've seen that building, because you can't miss that building. And when you look at that, it's like, oh, my gosh, what in the world is that building? And so I wanted you, that is the Todd Lane view that you're looking at, and the second one is just another looking down the sidewalk where I'd actually pulled into the parking lot. The next building that you'll see is a storage unit, very similar to what is being proposed here today. This is on Cunningham Drive. It's similar in style and design. It's a two hundred and twenty, this is two hundred and twenty-five feet wide, and we're talking about two hundred and eighty feet, I believe, is the dimension that's being proposed. That's a pretty massive building. That picture is taken more as a close-up, and if you look to the, to the last picture, that's taken up just as I turned into the parking lot off Mercury Boulevard, where the Olive Garden is, right to the, to the left of the Olive Garden, there's a new car washout in front of it. But this sits back off the highway, and so it's not obtrusive-looking as you're driving down Mercury Boulevard. And I think a building of this magnitude is not the, this is just to give you a visual, I just don't believe that it represents our small-town atmosphere that we have worked so hard to preserve, and for a council to vote something like this, I, I, it, I just, I can't understand it, because I think we all want to preserve what we have here. Are we going to make it like any other city that's around us? Pecosin would be no different than any other city that we've seen these kinds of buildings fronting the main highways. And so I would ask that respectfully, that the council deny that. I have done some additional digging into this property because, I haven't been a native, I've been here a long time, been familiar with it, and of course, my father developed the property beside it, and I know that there has, there was an issue with this property for a long time. That's one of the reasons it's never been developed. I pulled an old plat that shows a fifteen-foot drainage, it says, it's a fifteen-foot drainage, utility, ingress and egress easement, and a fifteen- it says, it's a 15-foot drainage, utility, ingress and egress easement, and a 15-foot sanitary easement that runs down this property. And if you look at this property, it would appear to me, and I'm not an engineer, but based on what was presented at the Planning Commission, and I don't see that particular one here, there was a, there's a strip between this property and the Pecosin, the post office. And that strip is about 18, it's 18.85 feet, actually, a strip. And then there's a vacant strip, and then there's a 15-foot easement. So, I would like to pass that out to everybody, for you to take a look at that, so that you can see that this was never brought to our attention, you know, as, it was never brought to the Planning Commission's attention, this particular issue, and how it's going to be addressed as well. Because it would appear that this building is sitting on top of this easement. So, I would like to pass that out as well. And I also have a copy I would like to pass out as well. And this is actually the post office, what you're looking at right now, what you're seeing right now is a plat of the property of Joseph and Salvatore Russo. And if you look at the right-hand side, the property line that adjoins the post office, the way I read this plat, there is a space of about, would appear to be around 20 feet. And then you see this ingress and egress and sewer easement that's drawn in there. And it would appear that the building itself actually would lay on top of that easement. I have another plat that was just handed out to you, which is the piece that Kiotis, this is the strip, that Kiotis had deeded to the Frawl developers. This is a piece that you were showing on our, on the, if you look, there's a strip in red that y'all had that was presented to, that strip in red at the top is actually owned by, well, it's been sold down to APFI, whoever, wherever they may be, APIF. But if you look at that, this plat is dated in 98. The one you're looking at, the first one I gave you is platted in 2004. This one is 1998. And it also shows that strip that we're talking about, and it also shows this easement for right-of-way of ingress and egress. And I would ask the council to please postpone your vote on this, this project tonight. And let's do a little bit more research, dig a little bit more into it. I think that the city of Pecosin citizens would appreciate the fact that the council has taken into consideration all of the issues that have been posed tonight, and give it an opportunity to circulate, because I can tell you, if I sincerely, my heart of hearts believe that most people really don't know what's going on with this project, this proposal, and that if they did know, there would be a serious outcry. So, I am asking council to, let's see how the citizens of Pecosin react to this meeting tonight. The Planning Commission denied it unanimously. It's on record. I've watched it twice today. Anybody can go in and watch it. Anybody that's watching the council meeting tonight will know that they can come back in and watch this. And I think that we owe it to the citizens to see what the citizens think, too. And I just would like to say at the end, that I am not opposed to progress, and I am a firm believer in an individual right to develop their property. But I do think that we have an obligation to our citizenry, when we're doing a conditional use permit, that we owe it to our citizens to use good judgment, and the judgment that we have all exhibited previously in the comprehensive plan. I think that's all I got to say. If you have any questions, I'd be able to answer them. But I would respectfully ask that y'all postpone voting on this tonight. Thank you.
Libby, thank you. Joseph...